Meeting of the Corolla City Council to order October 27, 2020 via Zoom as we've been doing for the last several months. Item one is roll call. Or item two, actually.
Councilor Foster.
Present.
Gross. Quinn.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and various other city staff, city clerk, and various other city staff. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with item six removed.
It's all moved.
It moved by Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved with that change. Item four is citizen comments. This is the time on the agenda for anyone that'd like to speak just tonight on an item that's not already on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight?
Hi, I'm Kathy Hotson-Peller, and I just wanted to say welcome. Hi, I'm so excited to see you in the city council. Congratulations, and congratulations Kelly on your award. That is really exciting. I missed all that last meeting. A couple of things I just wanted to bring up. I know that I read in the working session notes from last meeting that there were 52 applicants for the police department, which is great. Of those, I think 20 appeared for testing and interview, and then three certified remain for certification, but one withdrew. I was wondering if we have information on the demographics of those candidates. I know Kevin Sanders was working with Chief Crone on increasing the diversity of the department. So I was kind of excited to hear about what the results were of the interview process. And also, I think Megan mentioned last meeting about possibly Chief Crone having like a community outreach with citizens in the community, just to kind of get more in touch with our bike park neighbors. So I was wondering if anything was happening with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Yeah, Kelly has that information because he mentioned that to us at the council meeting. You'll get that to her once, Kelly. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dhatwale, and I'm here representing the Corolla Urban Chicken Network, and I am just here to show support. And again, thank you, city council members, for doing your due diligence. Thank you.
Okay, that item is on the agenda, so we will be taking that up a little bit later.
All of the public comments today.
Oh, they're finished? Okay, thank you. I thought we were waiting. Thank you very much. Okay. And we'll get back to Kathy on her question about Chief Crone as well. Okay, item, we'll move then on to item five, voluntary annexation of the meed property. This is an annexation of approximately 43 and a third acre parcel located east of Auburn Hills East subdivision and west of Dubuque Street. I believe Dave Johnson, our community development director, is going to give us a report on this project. Dave, you're muted.
Thank you.
There you go.
So I just want to add to what Mayor Lundell said that this is in the city of Corolla growth boundary. This is a 100% voluntary annexation, and the applicant wishes to create a low-density residential development that will be served by the city of Corolla. Properties annexed in Corolla are automatically zoned R1, so that zoning designation will support the development that the owner wishes to do. And both the proposed land use and zoning conform with Corolla Community Plan, as well as the land use map designation of low-density residential, which is zero to six dwelling units per acre. Staff supports the requested annexation. Again, it's within our growth boundary. It makes a more uniform city boundary, and the city of Corolla is prepared and can provide services. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application at their October 7 meeting. Thanks, John. By a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommends city council approve their request to annex the property. And John just put an annexation exhibit up that gives you an idea as to where the property is located in relationship to the rest of city limits, as well as Johnson County to the east and North Liberty to the north. And there's a more detailed exhibit of the property and how it relates to Auburn East to the west, as well as Dubuque Street. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Item C is the public hearing on this annexation. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Clerk, are there any written or oral comments tonight?
There are no written, and I don't see any oral unless one of the two people present via Zoom has any comments.
Hi, John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant. I'm available for questions. I think Dave pretty well summarized the site. We've met with city staff to review the concept and are prepared to move forward with this. Looking forward to the project on this northeast side of town.
Very good. Thank you, John. If there's no other comments, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the voluntary annexation of real property into the city of Corolla, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion for the staff or for John? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gross. Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Resolution passes all ayes. Item six is removed from the agenda, so we move on to item seven, which is 2500 Holiday Court. This is a ordinance change to the community plan that will change the land use map for this property located at 2500 Holiday Court from Regional Commercial to High Density Residential. And again, our community development director, Dave Johnson, will give us a report on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This amendment would support a future 49-unit multifamily building. The average density of the development is 16 units per acre. Regional commercial areas are intended to accommodate larger shopping centers and developments that serve more of a regional function. These oftentimes have a mix of big-box retail, national retailers, as well as multi-tenant developments. High-density residential areas consist of multifamily residential structures that have, again, an average density of 16 dwelling units or more per acre. These are usually multi-story and share common areas and amenities. These would be apartments, kind of mini of senior living, things of that nature. The Corolla Community Plan would actually support either land use designation at this location. Thanks, John. The location lends itself to the established trend of commercial development seen off Corridor Way and Holiday Road, which extends east off Coral Ridge Avenue, and that same access to commercial development and services would also support high-density residential development. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their October 7 meeting. By a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended approving their request to amend the city of Corolla land use plan map from Regional Commercial to High Density Residential for the subject property. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Item C is a public hearing on this community plan ordinance change. I will open the public hearing. And Mr. Clerk, any written or anyone like to speak to us tonight?
Once again, there are no written comments, and I'm not sure if anyone present via Zoom is interested in speaking. But there's no one present in the council chambers.
Mr. Mayor, this is Megan Sankar, representing the owner of the property or the applicant. Can I just have a few?
Absolutely, Megan. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'll share my video, although I'm a little rushed tonight, so I apologize. Okay, I just wanted to say, we worked with you guys on Corolla, excuse me, Coral Ridge Apartments in Corolla, where the old lantern partnersing home site was. And we presented to a work session regarding this project probably, I don't know, six to 12 months ago. And so we're back. We were lucky enough to be selected for tax credits through Iowa Finance Authority, and our goal would be to work through this land use amendment. We've submitted rezoning, replating, and site plan approval October 1, and we're working with the city staff to address their comments and concerns. And hopefully, within the next few weeks or upcoming meetings, we'll be back to present that information. But the goal would be to start construction in September, excuse me, spring of 2021, late winter, early spring 2021, with a 12-month construction period. And again, these would be affordable units at 30, 40, 60, and a few market rate units.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak just while the public hearing is open? Hearing none and saying none, I'll close the public hearing and consider the ordinance. Don?
Ordinance number 220, that 1017, in ordinance amending the Corolla Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as 2500 Holiday Court, Corolla, Iowa, to be designated a high-density residential use in place of commercial use, introduced for adoption first consideration by council member Gross, seconded by?
I got that.
Okay, seconded by Foster. Any comments, questions?
Is this right across the street from the fire department? Is that what it looks like?
Yes.
Or not? Okay.
Right south of the fire department.
Okay, that's correct. Okay, just making sure I got my bearings. Thanks.
If there's nothing else, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. The ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item eight is Eagle Bend at Clear Creek. Again, we'll get a report from Dave Johnson on this project that will rezone this property from R1 Single Family Residential District to RPUD1 Residential Planned Unit Development One District, and approve a PUDA site plan and preliminary plat. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. John, would you mind pulling up the first exhibit, the site plan supplemental? Thank you. So Crossing Land LLC is proposing a 123-acre development. This is located north of Kennedy Parkway and west of Camp Cardinal Boulevard. It's primarily residential, includes a mixture of single-family duplexes, townhomes, apartment buildings, and a retirement village. It will be developed under four phases, which will span approximately five years. John, if you wouldn't mind moving to the next exhibit? Thank you. The development contains a total of 113 lots and 234 units. 92 lots will be dedicated to single-family residential. 17 lots will be duplexes for a total of 34 units. Three lots will be townhomes for 18 units, and one lot will be for multifamily, a 90-unit building. Unique to this development is a large kind of swath of high-quality timber that's marked off in a green area that's designated to be preserved and become an amenity for this development. These are high-quality trees here. We've had conversations about walking paths and other ways that that space could be utilized by the residents and public. So the development has an average density that's consistent with the Corolla land use map designation of low-density residential, and the requested RPUD1 zoning classification is also consistent with Corolla land use plan map. This development will allow for slightly reduced rear yard setbacks and frontage requirements, which in turn will allow for more open space that will be preserved, therefore meeting the intent of what a PUD district should do. Staff has reviewed the proposed site plan, preliminary plat, and the rezoning, and finds it conforms with the relevant site design standards, as well as the intent of PUD districts. There will be further discussions as each one of these phases develop under a PUDB site plan application, in which case we'll get a little bit more into detail on the building design, materials, all of which will be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as city council, for further review and approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their October 7 of a 2020 meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommends approval of the request to rezone the property from R1 Single Family Residential to the RPUD1 Residential Planned Unit Development One District, the PUDA site plan, and the preliminary plat for Eagle Bend at Clear Creek Development. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
So items, item C is a public hearing on this rezoning request from R1 to RPUD1 and a PUDA site plan. I'll declare the public hearing open. And Mr. Clerk, did the council receive any written comments, or does anyone like to speak to us tonight?
No written comments were received for the city councils. And there's no one in the audience tonight to speak, but I'm not sure if there's anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak.
Josh Hitler here for Southgate Companies, representing the owner, applicant, and developer. And thank you, Dave, for that explanation of our intent. And also want to thank city staff for continuing to work with us throughout the midst of a pandemic to continue pushing this project forward and allowing us to make progress to get to this stage today. One minor adjustment from the description that Dave mentioned, the green areas shown on the map are areas that we're going to focus on timber stand improvement. So not just preserving the timber, but also working with the DNR. I've been walking the timber with Mark Vitash of the DNR. So those will be areas that we preserve and improve through a scheduled program, primarily designed by the DNR. There will be a very large pocket of timber in other places that are, that is preserved throughout the site, the 124-acre site. But the green area is where we really want to focus our efforts on creating a natural experience that blends into the community and really serves as a prime amenity for this development. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from the council.
Thank you, Josh. Before I close the public hearing, are there any other comments from the public? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Eagle Bend at Clear Creek, introduced for adoption by council member Hanyan, seconded by?
Second.
Okay, I believe that was seconded by Goodrich first. Several came in at the same time. We'll give it to Lori. Okay, questions and comments on this project?
Is this the development we talked about where most of it will be in the Clear Creek development or Clear Creek District? Kelly was at that?
Right.
Yes. I don't, I don't know Mitch whether, what the school district's position would be on allowing transfers in. I know they do at the end, right before, behind Borlaug. There's, yeah, Iowa City School District does let those people opt in.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Josh, I'd just like to thank you for working so hard with the DNR to save as many trees as possible.
Oh, well, thank you, Jill. I'll echo what Jill just said. And I speak very high, I have high respect for Mark Vitash of the DNR. He is a real expert when it comes to working with forestry, and I'm glad to hear that Mark's involved. I also want to get shout out to the staff. I know not only Dave, but Amy Foster and the engineering staff have done a great job too of working on this project to try and make it a beautiful amenity. Any other comments? Roll call?
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The resolution is approved all ayes. Now, item E is the ordinance that would amend the zoning ordinance for this project.
Ordinance number 2020-1018, in ordinance amending the Corolla zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corolla, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Eagle Bend at Clear Creek, from R1 Single Family Residential District to RPUD1 Residential Planned Unit Development One District, introduced for adoption first consideration by council member Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? Roll call?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Okay, the first reading of the ordinance passes, it passes all ayes. Item nine is the Red Hawk subdivision, part two. This is for a preliminary and final plat for the three commercial lots on the two and a half acres of land located east of the Red Hawk subdivision, which is the project that's just north of the medical classification facility off of Coral Ridge Avenue. Dave? Is, Dave, are you muted?
Yes, I was. Thank you again for reminding me. I'll get this right. This is a fairly straightforward subdivision. Currently, the area in question is two lots. The applicants will like to subdivide this into three lots. I would assume it's in response to perhaps tenants being identified. There's a shared access off of Lot Two. And John, if you wouldn't mind pulling, pulling that, those exhibits up? Thank you very much. And city staff has reviewed their request and finds that the preliminary and final plats do conform with the requirements for review and approve and approval as outlined in Chapter 170 subdivision regulations of the Corolla City Code. And the applicant requests that the city council review, as well as approve this. The commission did review this at their October 7, 2020 meeting, and recommended by a vote of seven to zero that the preliminary and final plat for Red Hawk subdivision part two be approved. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
There's no public hearing, so I would consider the resolution on the preliminary plat.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Red Hawk subdivision part two, Corolla, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call?
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The preliminary plat resolution is approved all ayes. Now, this resolution for the final plat, please.
Resolution approving the final plat for Red Hawk subdivision part two, Corolla, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? Roll call?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Goodrich. Sorry, Laura.
Aye.
Final plat resolution is approved all ayes. Not sure what that was. Item 10, urban renewal areas. There's item A and B. The, both of them are ordinances that set the base value of property in two different Corolla urban renewal areas. This first one is in the Coral Ridge Commerce Park. Don?
Ordinance number 2020-1014, in ordinance amending ordinances number 608, 707, 2001-942, 2006-1052, 2013-1009, 2014-1007, and 2017-1017, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Corolla Urban Renewal Project area in the city of Corolla, Johnson County, Iowa, be, I, as a benefit for the benefits of the state of Iowa, city of Corolla, county of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal development project. Ordinance introduced for adoption first consideration by council member Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Kelly or Kevin, would one of you two like to explain in a little more understandable English what this is?
Sure. If you remember, usually towards the end of the year, we set base values for TIF buildings that start the 20-year period. So this ordinance is adding the Burger King lot that was built last year. Remember, these are always a year behind. And the next ordinance is adding the two multi-tenant commercial buildings, one with the Five Guys and one with the Pearl Vision slash Taco John's over at Coral Galleria to the ordinance. So that just starts the 20 years on both of those buildings.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from the council? Roll call?
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
That ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item B is the same thing as Kevin mentioned for the, some property near the Galleria. Don?
Ordinance number 2020-1015, in ordinance amending ordinance numbers 650, 679, 97-786, 2001-941, 2002-95, 2013-1007, 2015-1018, 2016-1020, and 2017-1016, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year and all property located within the general, shoot, within the mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Project area in the city of Corolla, county of Johnson, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Corolla, county of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal development project, introduced for adoption by, first consideration by council member, when, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call?
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item 11 is the second consideration of the urban chicken ordinance that sets forth the process to allow chickens in residential zoning districts. Don?
Ordinance number 2020-1012, in ordinance adding Chapter 55A regarding urban chickens, introduced for adoption second consideration by council member Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? Oh, yeah, I did. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I want to say that I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Thank you, Kevin, and all the other employees, and also Jill for um, employees and also Jill for working with, um, residents. I would like to say that I really like that, um, I think it's F I I part that states that, um, it's a four by four space that each chicken needs and that it shouldn't go onto their neighbor's yard. I just wondered if that could be highlighted so that people can see that right from the beginning.
We can make sure that when the application comes in, that we make sure that that's, uh, uh, front and center so that we know, uh, point that out to people before they start installing anything.
Right. Um, I have a quick question, please. So right now, it just said fee, and fee will be determined by city council. Um, are we, uh, when, when are we talking about fee or are we talking about fee now? How does, how does this process work?
So when we do the third reading at the next meeting, there'll be a resolution following the third reading that will set the fee. So I think the direction we have is to put that twenty-five dollars unless anybody has a, uh, different idea at this point.
I'd like to see it at twenty-five dollars, um, just to make sure. Again, I was a little bit nervous when the, we had the fee initially at a hundred dollars. I was a little bit concerned that that would be cost prohibitive for folks, so I'm, I'm in favor of a twenty-five dollar fee.
I would agree with Megan, um, for the twenty-five dollar fee, just to keep it affordable, you know, for people. I think a hundred dollars is too high.
And was it twenty-five for the one year? Was that, was it the hundred because it was multiple years?
Uh, twenty-five for, uh, like annually and a hundred, uh, was for three years. But if you, you know, if you divide it, that, yeah, it's still higher.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not doing this to make money on this anymore. This is too good. Yeah, I'm with you.
Anything else otherwise? Uh, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration all ayes. Item B is, um, an ordinance that incorporates changes in state laws passed in the twenty twenty session into our code of ordinance system.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten thirteen and ordinance amending chapter fifty-five regarding animal neglect and abandonment, introduced for adoption, second consideration by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? Roll call?
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration all ayes. Moving on to item twelve, twenty-eight E road maintenance agreement. This is an agreement that outlines the responsibilities for maintenance of Camp Cardinal Road, Camp Cardinal Boulevard and Kennedy Parkway between the city of Corville and the city of Iowa City.
Resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement between the city of Corville and the city of Iowa City regarding road maintenance, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion? Roll call?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The resolution is approved all ayes. Item thirteen is a temporary easement, um, resolution approving an easement that will allow the city to construct temporary, uh, parking improvements on the lot across the, from the State Ridge Suites on the west side of East Second Avenue in the Iowa River Landing. Don?
Resolution approving a temporary easement with the University of Iowa for construction of parking improvements in the Iowa River Landing District, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call?
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item fourteen is wellness grant. This is a resolution approving an agreement with Wellmark for a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars for the Creekside Cross Trailhead and Water Fountain. Don?
Resolution approving a wellness grant agreement with the Wellmark Foundation for the Creekside Cross Trailhead and Water Fountain, introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Gross. Discussion?
What a great project. Congratulations on getting that grant, Sherry.
Thank you. Alex Boomeyer, our parks superintendent, wrote this grant. It is the, one of the small match grants for the Wellmark Foundation. And we're really excited because this, this area is just, has grown, um, exponentially for us over the last couple of years in terms of people using it and the opening of the new flow trails at this, um, location last weekend. We just have a lot of people out there and this will be a nice amenity to have there.
I was just gonna say, I, Mayor Lindell, I thought you were channeling Mayor Fossett on me. That was my first second I was able to get this whole time, so.
You're, you're too slow on your mute button there, I think. So, no, I, I was gonna mention this under the mayor's report, but since Sherry, um, brought it up, just the wonderful event last weekend, last Saturday, uh, cutting the ribbon for the new flow trail. Uh, that is such a fantastic facility out there. I, it, it actually just kind of blew me away, the structures and the, if, the infrastructure that the Parks Department has been able to build on their own with their own staff. Uh, the, it's just incredible, the, the facilities for bicyclists. And most of the, most of the infrastructure was built using, um, uh, used products. So, you know, re, reuse of, of products. It's, it's very impressive. I would encourage all of us to go out and see it and encourage the public to go check it out, so.
Sherry, I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Yeah. Sherry, um, is this going to be open during the, and, um, available for use during the winter months, or is this something that is, is a seasonal, seasonal trail?
The, the flow trail or the, this, um, the subject of this grant?
Um, the flow trail.
So flow trails are, leave no trace behind. So if it's dry and it's frozen, you know, the ground's frozen and, and, um, the rider feels comfortable riding them, they are welcome to do that. Um, if, if you look behind you and you leave a track, that, that's an indication in all seasons that you should not be on the trail. So in answer to your question, yes, it can be open, um, all year round out there. We probably won't groom these particular trails, aren't really set up to take the, um, the snow dog through and groom those. Um, the flat, uh, single track trail at Woodpecker, um, single track is, um, will, will groom those, but probably not the way these bend and loop around, um, out at Flow Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Sherry, where, where would be, uh, where would the trailhead be on that trail when it start construction?
Yep, the picture that, um, just was up on your screen, um, that picture is similar to where we, we just had the ribbon cutting.
Okay.
Right in that area, um, where we were last weekend. So, um, this calls for, um, uh, an area where you, if you're not a rider, this would give you an opportunity to sit and watch what's going on. And you can oversee both Creekside Cross and the, the flow trails from this position. And then there's a second, smaller space up at the top where you take off to the blue or the green trails, um, up at the, up at the very top. So there'd be a second, um, place. So if you were a family, um, and somebody doesn't ride in your family but wants to watch, this would give a great place. It'll be a nice gathering point. It'll offer, um, a place for, um, you to, uh, we, we already have the, um, fix-it station in place, um, place to, you know, wipe your bike down when you're done. If, if it does, sometimes it can get a little dusty. Um, and there's some, some different features on the cross course. Um, and then it just gives a place for somebody to sit and watch and, uh, uh, observe maybe their family in action.
Will there be facility there?
Restrooms?
Yeah.
Not with this grant. We have restrooms at the ballpark and then, um, at the Charles Gay Farm Festival site, which is right next door. Um, and the, the flow trails go through that site. There is, that future site is to have restrooms, shelter, playground, um, and, uh, two reserved, preserved barns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, roll call, please.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
The resolution is approved all ayes. Item fifteen, a community development block grant program. Um, this is a resolution for a, uh, almost a thirty-five, thirty-nine thousand dollar grant for programs to support families with children through scholarships and covering expenses for full and partial day nests programs, uh, run by the Recreation Department, while the Iowa City Community School District is in the hybrid learning model due to the pandemic. Don?
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and sign that certain Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant, contract number two zero OT oh eight one, introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call?
Well, I was just gonna say real quick, Mike, because I think, I think the nests are so important and it's a huge thing that the city's doing. I just, again, I just want to commend the city and its partnership with these, with the local nonprofits for everything you've been doing, Sherry, because, you know, I hear it firsthand on the ground, and the nests are making a difference. Children are utilizing them, families are utilizing them. Uh, they've had a real profound and positive impact. So I just wanted to give everybody a shout out who's had a role in that.
That's great.
I want to staff.
Thanks for sharing that. Roll call?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item sixteen is Iowa COVID Government Relief Fund. This is an updated second resolution that doesn't specify a dollar amount that will allow us hopefully to apply for additional funds for, uh, as it become available for reimbursement of direct expenses incurred in response to the pandemic from the state of Iowa's CARES Act, if the state, uh, determines that there's additional money to be allocated.
Resolution requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID dash one nine Government Relief Fund, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? I, I just want to give a shout out to, um, Alan Hubble, our Assistant City Administrator for, for, um, being on top of all these available funding. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of, um, paperwork, um, that needs to be followed by the letter of the, of the, the rules of the program, and Alan does a fantastic job of managing that for us. Anything else? Roll call?
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
I think that's a yes.
Goodrich.
Okay. Uh, resolution passes all ayes. Moving on to number seventeen, water tower maintenance proposal. This is an agreement that will provide for the interior and exterior renovation of all three towers in the next five years while also completing regular inspection and maintenance tasks. And it's, uh, my pleasure to, to welcome Matt Gilmore, our water superintendent that hasn't spoken to us for a while, that he's gonna explain a little bit more about the bid report and this project. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is for the approval of a maintenance agreement between the city of Corville and Suez Utility Service Company that would allow for the inspection, maintenance and repair of the city's three water towers. Um, historically, the process by which we, uh, provided water tower maintenance has, was to collect money in res, reserve funds, um, until we had enough funds accumulated to fund all, uh, all the large maintenance projects. And then we would hire engineering firms to coordinate and facilitate the inspection and repair. Um, and then have various subcontractors complete the necessary work. Um, this process would create, um, large and sometimes unpredictable outlays when major tank overhauls were needed. Um, and it also involved a great deal of coordination. Um, the proposed maintenance agreement would lessen the burden of the large capital outlays and begin to transition these costs to, uh, something that is more closely, uh, or more closely resembles a fixed cost, um, while still ensuring all aspects of tank maintenance and renovation are completed. Um, the proposed maintenance agreement allows for annual inspections to be done on all towers. Biannual washout and disinfection on all towers includes all tank-related engineering cost and covers both the necessary initial renovations and any future renovations. Um, all this combines to extend the tower life cycle and effectively spread, um, for upfront renovation costs over several years, allowing the water department to fund other necessary pop projects throughout the city. Um, just a couple of notes, the service agreement would automatically renew every year, um, unless we were to notify Suez, um, within a certain period of time of our intent to cancel. Um, if we were to ever do that, then payment would be due at that time for any services that were rendered, um, and then the agreement would be canceled. Um, we did receive two quotes on this project and I recommend that we, um, approve these Suez, um, proposal. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, let's do the resolution and I'll ask one more time if there's any questions.
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding proposal for water tower maintenance, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Uh, any questions for Matt? Or comments?
Oh, this isn't, this is an ongoing question I have. I, um, am wondering that if the, uh, water tower on Commerce Drive will get some extra special attention because it seems to show, uh, wear on the outside quicker than the other two.
It's going, all of the, in the next five years, pretty much all the three towers are scheduled to be renovated on the outside. Um, so within the next five years, all of them would be renovated in terms of recoded. And then, um, in the next, probably next year, they would all be washed, pressure washed and, and basically that's mold that is building on the bottom of the towers.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Roll call?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. We're moving from water towers to mulch while hauling and disposal. Item eighteen, this is a, a bid report and a resolution for an agreement for the hauling and disposal of mulch at the Hawkeye Train Lot on James Street generated from the Durachio storm event. Don?
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding contract for mulch hauling and disposal, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
I, I was just curious, what was the, uh, estimate? Because this is a huge range in the bids. I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have the bid report given, please, yeah.
Yeah, the, there were thirteen bids that ranged from thirty thousand, one hundred is the low to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand was the, um, high. Um, this will be reimbursed by FEMA. We did get a resident, um, requ, um, was concerned that it isn't a local contractor. On, under our FEMA rules, um, we do need to go through a bidding process and we did receive thirteen bids. And so, um, I think in answer to your question, um, Mitch, we did not have, um, an estimate on this, but we got thirteen bids. And, um, you know, the low bids were, there were one, there were six that were all within four thousand dollars of each other. So I think that is the sign that there was very, very good bids.
Aye.
Kelly, this is just a random question too, because I noticed on this bid, you know, there were three bids that were exactly the same. Hypothetically, if those three bids have been the lowest, what happens?
I don't know. We'd ask our city attorney, yeah, Kevin.
You can, you would be able, you would be able to, uh, i- identify other, other factors, uh, look at references. You can, you would be, you would be able to identify other, other factors, look at references, stuff like that, where you would be able to determine which one you thought was the best interest of the city.
Good, thank you.
These are the kind of bids, especially after disaster like this, that you get lots of contractors coming from a large area, and especially with all the work going on in Cedar Rapids right now and Iowa City right next door to us. I think that's one of the reasons you see so many that were outside our area that were interested in the process.
I have a quick question. Is that mulch, is that available for residents to come and take it to use in their home? Is that the same area where we do that?
It was the area where it was to, where people took the branches, but it will not be available for people. This will be hauled out. There are some issues with the material, ash, borer, et cetera, that they have specific recommendations on how to dispose of it.
Is that the reason why we didn't, we didn't partner up with local entities or organization to give them that mulch, you know, to like the poor farmer?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly.
No other comments? Roll call, please.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Resolution is approved all eyes. Item nineteen is the disposal of excess property and right of way. This is a resolution approving an intent to dispose of interest in, in the redevelopment of the Westport Touchless Car Wash, who will pay the city approximately two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for property located west of Twentieth Avenue and south of Fifth Street, so basically adjacent to the, to the car wash. Alternate proposals are due. If anyone would like to also submit on Monday, December seventh at ten AM, and the public hearing will be at the city council meeting on December eighth. Done?
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property and soliciting alternate proposals for the sale of an approximate point-two-six acre parcel and excess right of way near the intersection of Fifth Street and Twentieth Avenue. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Foster. Any questions or comments?
Um, yes, I just report that Dave Johnson is working with the potential purchasers of the property in regards to the adjacent redevelopment of the car wash, and this will all be part of that raw process. And so, I don't know, Dave, do you have an idea of when you may have that part worked out?
You know, we are working out one remaining detail in terms of design. That would be for the overhead door for the exit for the tunnel car wash. And that's it. That's all we have left to, to work through. The engineering has been completed. The engineering has been approved, and we just need to work out the disposal of the land as well as that one design feature.
Is the, the, the sum of fifteen dollar per square feet, is that, does the city ask for that amount, or how did?
Yes, the city attorney and I tried to come up with comparables. It was excess right of way, so that's not an easy thing to, to come up with a idea, but this was, they had given us a lower amount as a proposal, and we came up with this fifteen dollars a square foot.
Thank you.
There's no other questions? Roll call, please.
Dodds.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Goodrich. Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Resolution is passed all eyes. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through U, close the, I would like to pull out item F, please.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the consent calendar A through U while pulling out item F for further discussion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Kind of in unison there. I'll give it to Foster. Any discussion? Roll call?
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Okay, the motion is approved all eyes. Now we will discuss item F. Kevin, I believe you wanted to make a comment on it?
Yes, I was talking to the police chief, and we have been trying to track down Buffalo Wild Wings to pay their late fees for false alarm fees for a new, a long time. So we decided this, we would ask that this be the approval of their license be subject to the payment of those fees, which is only two hundred and seventy-five dollars, but we've been having problems collecting that from them.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, to approve item F. Liquor license for outdoor and Sunday sales by Buffalo Wild Wings with the amendment that it would be contingent on them paying the false alarm fees due to the city. Motion by?
So moved.
By Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Second by Gross. Just further discussion? Roll call?
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodds.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Thank you.
Passes all eyes. Thank you, Kevin. Item twenty-one is city administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, just a couple of brief things. First of all, just wanted to remind folks that we are in have the new transit routes, new transit stops and system, and just wanted to let you know that things are going very, very well. The Transit Department is extremely happy because their on-time performance has increased significantly since they've implemented these changes, which ultimately will be a good thing for our citizens that ride the buses because they'll be on time and be able to be assured that they're going to do that. And also, all of the transfer points have worked really well as well, so that they, nobody's being left behind or have to stay a long time with that as well. So good news with the Transit Department. They are starting the process of working on the transfer fares with, with the city of Iowa, the city and the consultant, and so that whole process is in place, and they would like to get that all worked out and implemented by the time Iowa City implements their part of this study, which will be August of next year. So by that time, they'd like to have the whole transfer policy and fees and all of that worked out. And so that will be coming up to you hopefully late winter, they'll be able to have that, and that would be between Iowa City and Corleville, so they would, would match for those items. Just remind folks that the next week is Election Day, so if you haven't voted early to come next Tuesday, and that transit is free that day if people would like to ride it. And then this Saturday is Halloween. The hours are five-thirty to eight o'clock, and there's a lot of suggestions on the Corleville website of how to do that safely. So encourage people to read those hints and to be safe while they're considering what they would like to do for Halloween. So that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. As is often the case, you checked off about everything on my list. I'll just mention on November eleventh is Wednesday, November eleventh is Veterans Day. So that's a, that's about a month or a couple of weeks, a little bit off, I guess about two weeks is all. Forget what month we're in. But on the most or many of the city facilities, City Hall, the library, will be closed on, on November eleventh. The Aquatic Center and Rec Center will be open. Check the website for more details. Those who have garbage collection on Wednesday and Thursday, yours will be picked up that week one day late. So Wednesday on Thursday and Thursday pickup on Friday. So just keep, try and keep that in mind. And the only other thing I'll mention is some recognition that shout out again to our engineering and stormwater staff for, the city received the Stormwater and Urban Watership Development, Development of the Year Award for our stormwater initiative that we've been working on the last few years on Coral Ridge Avenue, where basically all the stormwater that's collected, that comes off that, that highway, that Coral Ridge Avenue is managed and maintained on-site through a series of bio-retention cells and so forth, rather than the traditional way of putting it into a creek and then polluting the creek with the runoff. It's all treated on-site. It's the largest facility of that type, type in the state. So we thank the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership for recognizing us on that effort. I will, that's it for me. Item twenty-three is city attorney reports.
I have nothing additional, Kevin.
I have nothing else, though.
Okay, thank you. Committee and council members. Quinn, would you like to go first tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will take a dab at it.
I think I called on you last, last time, so it's your turn to go first, so.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that the opening of Creekside Flow Trail was great. I really enjoyed that. It's, it's amazing. The team, Sheri, Alex, you know, how they come together and they put their vision, putting the time to do their research, make sure that it fit in that area, and it's not only that it's fit, but it's also provide a lot of different level for people to enjoy from beginning all the way until advance. It, it was great. I have been out there twice, and I enjoy every minute of it. And I can't, yeah, I, I can't wait to see, once the trailhead is done, what more that could offer to Corleville residents. So great job, Sheri and Alex and the team. I want to congratulate Eric Fisher and his wife on their new baby boy. I don't know, yeah, I don't know if they, you know, they've been parents before, but, you know, parenthood's challenging. And I'm glad that he gets some time to spend with his family. I heard that Ed Bauer has been with us for forty-one years, and he is looking to retire. So I want to thank you, thank him for his service to our city for the last forty-one years. And just want to echo on Kelly, for Halloween this Saturday, wear a mask when you go out and trick or treat, maybe trick or treat with family and friend that you know that you have been in a pot with since the beginning of the pandemic, just to keep everyone safe. And try to come, come up with creative way to still enjoy Halloween, but enjoy it in a safe way. And again, Election Day is a week from today, right? And all the buses are free. Corleville, Cambus, and Iowa City. So get out and vote. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being on top of, I didn't realize Eric had another child, he and his wife, and I didn't realize that Ed's retirement was coming up so soon. So thank you for reporting on that. Mitch, since you say I don't call on you enough, I'll let you go second.
Yeah, hi is a tough one to follow. I kind of like her going last, but they're good reporting, but, you know, I, I guess we've talked a lot about Election Day is next week, but I want to remind people, Election Day is actually all week, so you can vote all week as well. So if you know that you're unable to vote next Tuesday on November third, you are still able to vote at the Johnson County Auditor's Office. That's Monday through Saturday from eight until five, and then on Sundays from ten AM until four. So if you don't think you're going to be able to vote on next Tuesday, please go to the auditor's office to vote during those times, because obviously it's very, very important that you do that. And then I, I guess my last thing is a little bit of chuckle that when I was reading through the Halloween protocols, one of the suggestions was to toss your candy at people and not have a dish. So I thought, like, for grumpy old people, this would be like the best thing, you could just, like, chuck candy at, at kids, and it's going to be legal and approved for the night. So there we go. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. Who wants to go next? Jill, would you like to go next?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. I wanted to express my thanks to Ellen Hubble. After we had our affordable housing discussion, she put together new documentation, which was, really showed a, a big update from what we had accomplished from 2018. And then I think all of us individually or with another person, so we met quorum, has spoken with Sarah Barron from the Affordable Housing Coalition, and she was able to share her recommendations with all of us for a future goal setting when it comes to affordable housing. The mayor shred day went so well that the truck was full before I got there. So I am hoping that I can talk you guys into trying to get another date set for those of us who have been purging during the pandemic. So, um, I think I shared last, I'm congrats to Eric and his wife on their new little boy. He is going to talk with us. He is scheduled for November tenth on recycling in Corleville. So anyone who has questions about our recycling program, please first go to our city website and read up on it. And then you can share those with me, and I can hook you up with the group that's working on that together. And we're going to submit questions ahead of time so that it's a lot more efficient for Eric to discuss all the concerns. So we kind of have a baseline foundation of where to start with that. Bill Urbis from Fire Department is emailing out, it's time to adopt a hydrant, and we already have a little bit of snow fall. Here before we know it, so everybody who has a hydrant near their house, please adopt it to make sure that you keep that snow cleared from around those hydrants. And last but not least, besides voting, the numbers are going up. Put your mask on, be safe, stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Megan, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you so much. I just wanted to start by thanking all of the staff at the county auditor's office. I wanted to thank Travis. I wanted to thank all of the individuals who are working at the drive-up location. I believe the last number I saw stated that fifty percent of Johnson County residents have already voted, and that is absolutely incredible. I'm very proud of, of that number, and let's, let's keep that momentum going. In addition to the, the trick-or-treating, I also wanted to encourage everyone to check out the interactive map that is on the city's website that shows where all of the Halloween displays are, where the, the high-profile Halloween displays are. If you're looking for another fun and safe activity to do on Halloween, that, that is, that is a great option for you and your family. And then I also wanted to congratulate our, our engineering staff, our stormwater team. You know, I feel that that we hear a lot about water quality as, as an issue in Corleville, and I, I think if, if more residents knew what, everything that we do to, to enhance water quality, our stormwater efforts, every, it's, it's so impressive, and I have been so impressed by Amy's work and, and the work of, of our staff, the, you know, the fact that we have the longest stretch of green infrastructure in the state of Iowa is amazing. The, the green roof on top of the arena is, is incredible. So I would encourage people to, to check out some of the other things that we're doing here in Corleville. And then just the last thing I wanted to say was that I know we're paying a lot of attention to the, the top of the ballot with the election coming up, but I really want to encourage people to pay attention to those down-ballot races. In my short time being on the council, I have really learned the importance of those down-ballot races. What happens in Des Moines has a direct impact on everything that we can do here in Corleville. So make sure that you're doing your homework and that you are learning as much as you can about some of those other races and candidates on the ballot as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Laurie, bring us home, please.
Well, there are, there's a day, a time for fall cleanup at the cemetery, so get Well, there are, um, there's a day of a time for fall cleanup at the cemetery. So get your stuff from the cemetery. It's um the first week in November and then want to wish everyone uh happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lori. I believe we've called on everyone. So unless one has a one final comment, we will adjourn the formal meeting. I'll entertain a motion and then we'll uh take a couple minute break and go into a work session. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wow, I think everybody wants to do that.
Yeah.
Your, your face came up on the screen first, Megan, so I'll give it to you. Uh, second, second by?
Second.
By Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Well, couple minute break.